Good morning and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education, Business Meeting and Goal Setting Meeting for August 14th, 2018. We welcome those who are here in attendance with us and who may be watching us either on current broadcast or in future from the video archive. We do make note that this is the second of our summer meetings. Our summer meetings, I apologize to those in attendance, they are morning meetings. They tend to be a little bit less formal. They involve workshop-type work. And today, the majority of our efforts will be around our goal-setting and our Brighton Blueprint strategic plan document approval, which has been in progress during the summer. So it is a normal business meeting, however. So at this point in time, we will ask the board for approval of our agenda.
So moved?
Second. Moved by Larry and seconded by Marv. All in favor?
There was an edit to the July 10th approval of minutes. I think Matt Cuomo was listed as the first.
Well, we're just approving the agenda right now.
Oh, sorry.
We haven't even to the minutes yet.
Okay.
Thank you. So when we get to minutes, we're gonna have something there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I already grabbed.
You got it?
Yeah, I thought that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, we offer, every board meeting offers the opportunity for public participation. I do tend to remind the public, especially as we begin the school year, that all residents are welcome to our board meetings and encouraged to come. We have material that is on the table over by the door. It includes the agenda. It includes a brochure that says, "Welcome to your Board of Education meeting." That also includes a section on, "May I speak at the meeting?" And then we also have note cards and pens and pencils over there. So if someone would like to leave a question or a comment with regard to anything, really, we will get back to you on that. If you leave your name and contact information, we will follow up with you if you wish to do that. For public comment, I do remind folks that we encourage that. We welcome you to do that. Those wishing to speak will be recognized by me. We ask you to move to the podium, provide your name and address. You'll have three minutes for your remarks. Again, in addition to speaking at a board meeting, you're welcome to contact any members of the board at any time by email, phone, or postal mail. All of our member contact information is available on the district website. You certainly are welcome, as any resident is, to contact Dr. McGowan at any point in time. The one note that we always try to remind folks is, our public comment period does have certain rules and regulations. And one of those being, we're very careful about any public session discussion involving individual district personnel or individual students. That is not permitted. So having gone through that, and we'll, we do that normally at the beginning of every meeting, especially as the year starts up, I offer the opportunity at this point in time for public participation. Members of the public who are here in attendance who wish to address the board, if you raise your hand, I'll recognize you. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board this morning? Yes. Catherine plus guest. And again, we ask that you provide your name and your address. If it's something that can be answered, and there's a factual quick answer to be given, we certainly would do that right now, Dr. McGowan or myself, on behalf of the board. Most typically, we're here to listen, take some notes, either get back to you directly or get back in a public session, depending upon the issue. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you for explaining.
Welcome.
My name's Catherine Kubiak-Rizzoni, and I live at 52 Warrington Drive. I'm, I just would like to speak about the new role that has been created at the district to serve as a liaison between students and families and Dr. McGowan on issues of equity and inclusion. I don't know, there is already a person slated to fill this position. And I feel that the position itself, the creation of it, is wonderfully positive with a few negatives as well. So I think the position, it was designed to be an independent body, a place where students and families can safely share experiences of discrimination without fear of speaking up to district leaders. And that liaison can then relay the information to leaders in order to initiate necessary changes. This person is also slated to run the idea, the Diversity and Equity Committee meetings rather than Dr. McGowan, which I think is a step in the right direction. I just want to say that the negatives are the way I feel that it's being rolled out. So this person that's, there's a person already slated to fill, I don't know that we're supposed to say specific names, but it appears to have been appointed by Dr. McGowan without necessarily an open interview process, excuse me, and without involving key stakeholders, such as families of color or maybe the full board. That's a question I have, as to kind of how that person came to be. And so, excuse me, I think that he may or may not be the best person for the job, but there are families in the district displeased with the lack of transparency and democracy surrounding that process, especially for a position focused on inclusion. And then the second is that the way that this is being announced is rather paternalistic, kind of adding him as a second advisor to Black Student Union without asking them first and planning to kind of insert him into situations rather than make him available as a resource. So that forced nature is detrimental to the essence of the position. Their relationship building and trust are essential to the safe space. So I believe the position's a great opportunity for progress, but unless these issues surrounding its creation and rollout are addressed, I don't feel that it will be fully recognized at best and may even be detrimental. So that's all, I just, there may be answers to address or just a statement to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your feedback. Dr. McGowan, do you have anything?
No, I would say just that the role is still being worked through in terms of exactly what it will look like, and we're still working with Reverend Washington, so there I named the person, but regarding both specific tasks. And it is very common for us to hire individuals as consultants and in different roles that are time-bound and specific, which is this case. This is not a forever decision. This is an immediate need with a person filling an immediate need. And a long-term discussion about hiring anybody that we're committing to for the long term certainly involves a lot more stakeholders. But this was a very, very quick, this seems to be something that will be helpful in the short term, but in terms of long term, it would certainly involve a lot more people. So again, for a time-bound, specific purpose in terms of a consultant role, it's very common for us to find somebody that will work well for a variety of reasons, and there's a variety of needs involved in this, beyond just what you've cited today that we're looking at and trying to work through over the next few weeks before we finalize a work agreement with Reverend Washington.
And the other thing I would, Catherine, you asked about the board involvement, and you know, much more discussion to come. This is a, I would call this entire situation a work in progress, continuation of work that has begun over a number of years, really. The board has been fully aware since probably June. We began talking in May and June about, and a lot of it came from Diversity Equity Committee, utilizing outside resources. And we actually have two different individuals right now that Dr. McGowan is finalizing consultancy-type agreements. So in other words, I think you referred to sort of an administrative position or a full-time, if it were something of that ilk, a full-time administrator or creating an entirely new full-time position, a process by which you described would be more one that would be followed, a little different. We utilize consultant individuals all the time throughout the district for specific work. And we have, for a while, in this area of diversity, equity, inclusion, talked about utilizing capacity, whether they be local colleges, clergy, mediation individuals, experts in all different types of work through that area. And how can we best move forward in so many different areas? And I would expect us to go further on that. We continue to look at other individuals, vet other individuals. I would expect the district to be able to tap into additional folks for a variety of roles, maybe a very short-term situation, maybe a little bit longer term. But you make a good point, and we will make sure that the process is discussed, that the information is out in the community, and that, you know, there is feedback and opportunity for input by all. So thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Hi, I'm Sarah Terrace, and I live at 55 Janbury Circle South. And I've kind of addressed this before, so it's sort of not a new thing that I've talked about. I'm sort of a broken record with this. But somebody had mentioned that at the town meeting, why I brought this up, that this is something to address the school board with, so I'm doing that. I'm not sure if this is the way to do it or if there's another procedure, but, and we had talked, I talked about this before at the curriculum council, too, as far as just some smaller kind of things that can be done that may have a big impact right away. And we'd kind of talked about the mascot issue, which a lot of people don't realize what a baron is. And one of the things that a baron owns is people. So that has been very harmful and hurtful to a lot of people, especially students. And we had talked about the idea of having a petition to change the baron into something else, like a bobcat or a bear or something that starts with B, because we don't need to change the B, but we probably should change the baron. And I think that would be something that we could do very quickly and would be something that would show effort and also be welcoming to people, especially people of color. And, you know, it would be something we could do very quickly. And that was something that we'd sort of discussed, but I wasn't sure how we'd go about doing that. So that was the first thing. We'd also sort of talked about changing colonial days and, I forget what we had called it, but the family, the, I forget what it was called, but it was like the come-in as your favorite Indian or whatever that was.
I'm pretty sure that wasn't what it was called.
Well, it wasn't called that. It wasn't called that, but it was like, come in as your favorite, like colonial character or whatever that was, but...
Sarah, can I, can I actually clarify that for you? Those have, those that already have been changed, actually?
Okay.
We haven't had Civil War days for quite some time, and we haven't had colonial days.
Oh, well...
It's New York State History Day. In this past year, based on, and again, from the New York State curriculum, the variety of peoples that were studied during that period of time, kids were given the option of participating in any way. And so they didn't exclude any particular group of people in coming to participate. We're definitely reexamining that and how that's ruled out to kids for this year.
Okay, 'cause...
And the second was the Human Rights Day is the other activity that those have transitioned to.
But then there was also like, celebrate your family history, which even though it looks pretty benign on the surface, when people came in to sort of celebrate being Italian or Irish or whatever, if your family is Irish or Italian or German five generations back, if you're a person of color, what was your family five generations back? It's a little bit offensive and hurtful. So I think maybe celebrating American culture is a little bit better than saying, "What was your family when you came here?" Because some families maybe don't want to make a point about what their family was or who their family was five generations ago, or four, or three. So I think that was a little bit insensitive and maybe should be examined as something that maybe had some bias to it that wasn't necessarily intended, but was hurtful.
And I don't believe that was a grade-level-wide activity. I think that was an individual group of classrooms that have addressed that going into this year already, so that's a fair point.
Okay, well, that's awesome. That's great. But again, it happened last year, so I wasn't sure, you know, where we were going with that. And also, we'd sort of talked about, and again, this may be being addressed, and I don't know, we had talked about the hope or the desire to start recruiting people for administration positions and teaching positions, people of color who maybe could come into the district as, in teaching positions or administrative positions. And I wasn't sure where we were at with that, if that was happening or if that was something that was still on the table or where that was as far as...
Yep, the Diversity and Equity Committee this year, that's one of the three subcommittees, is diversity in our hiring practices, and that's another consultant that we've hired, a person from RIT, Renee Baker, who has an expertise in that area, is going to be working with that group to do just that.
Okay, great.
Catherine's actually been on that subcommittee or moved to that subcommittee at the end of the year when that was formed.
And the other thing, too, we do now participate in a couple of different consortium-type efforts to specifically attempt to attract and recruit students of color who are teaching candidates. And this is the first year of that.
Second year.
Second year of it, actually, you're right. I will tell you, and it's a lot more to come in this area, a lot more discussion. It's a priority area within our group, the Diversity Equity Group. This is a problem in every school district in America, finding teachers of color. We need to get the pool larger of students going into teaching. We need to make sure that Brighton is seen as an attractive place for folks to come, to teach, to live, because the majority of the folks that we would be looking to recruit nationally don't really know Brighton or the Rochester area that well. So some of our efforts around positioning ourselves to be a destination of choice for folks who want to come and teach or be an administrator and actually stay and grow and , you know, live here and put down roots. So it's a very difficult task. We're committed to the work. And we, as Dr. McGowan mentioned, this, Dr. Baker from RIT, we expect her to help us move down that road a little bit more aggressively. So thank you.
Okay.
One other element, I will address the baron mascot. You know, it's interesting because the baron, first of all, we really don't, it's an odd thing, if the mascot, if there is a mascot, is really the block letter P. Certainly, we're known as the Brighton Barons. Certainly, the top hat, cane, gloves is, has been around in the past. We don't utilize that at all anymore, and it's fading as material fades and old shirts and hats fade. We've had that discussion off and on. There's not been a huge groundswell around it, except that it's on our radar. It's something we've talked about some this summer, and I think we'll continue to look at it going forward and engage the community and students with that. So thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this morning?
My name's Robin Wilt. I live at 2695 East Avenue. And I am just addressing the board this morning in order to talk about an issue that has come up in conjunction with the town. Obviously, I'm on the town board, and I'm just coming from a public safety committee meeting in which we discuss the directed foot patrols at Brighton High School and 12 Corners Middle Schools and other buildings within the district. And I was just urging the board to really take a very open and inclusive approach to discussing these issues. I know that there will be some surveys conducted and whatnot in the early weeks of school. And I just wanted to make sure that we do reach out to all constituents and stakeholders in order to make sure that we do get a big-picture view of what the community is thinking surrounding these patrols as we move forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Robin. We appreciate that. I, you know, Dr. McGowan, may I have a comment? I will make a couple of quick comments, though. Yes, we are open. There will be ongoing dialogue. As you well know, the town, the police department, Dr. McGowan and the board have had conversations going back years, you know, to the days of DARE programs. The involvement of the Brighton Police Department as a whole in the school district has been an overwhelmingly positive situation in most cases. We certainly realize that there may be some folks who see things a bit differently. We want to continue to evaluate and to look at that. I do think that, you know, last year, we began a very aggressive initiative with Chief Henderson around safety at 12 Corners, walkers, bicyclists, pedestrian safety. And, you know, we had police officers do programming at the middle school and the high school for parents and students. I believe that's planned to continue this fall around that type of thing. I think generally, we think that, first of all, Brighton Police Department is not involved in student discipline in our buildings at all. We think that the relationship has many positive attributes. Getting them to know our building, our people, is certainly one of those. I do think there is a presence in a building that can provide a positive physical deterrent, maybe to some people sometimes. But I think that relationship building overall with students and officers, the Brighton Police Department employs some outstanding people, and our experience generally has been very positive. But we acknowledge that that needs to be, continue to be looked at and examined further. I will make note to residents, it's a very interesting issue. You look at the Greater Monroe County, last night in Hilton, they had the second of their public forums on arming security guards in their schools. It's a very contentious issue. There are a number of districts that are adamant about putting armed SROs and armed police officers full-time in school buildings every day, all day. We have long chosen, you know, a path, but not down that direction, you know? So these foot patrol officers are on regular patrol, they're in and out of buildings. So we will continue to look at it. Dr. McGowan will continue bringing that to the board, and we'll continue to have conversations. So... Did that cover it?
It does. Nothing different than what we talked about when you brought this up to me the other day. We'll work with Chief Henderson on gathering the feedback in the community and then have a discussion following that. Thank you.
I do encourage citizens to pay atten, it's fascinating. Webster, Brockport, Hilton are having very active and ongoing conversation in their community about arming security individuals, others, and various stages of that, if you will. It's an interesting conversation.
Penfield, also.
Yeah, Penfield, also. You're right. So... Is there anyone else in attendance that wishes to address the board this morning?
Hi, my name is Winnette Vickers. I live at 2640 Highland. I would just like to ask, is there a process for parents to possibly suggest different people who the new position that was rolled out? Is there a way for us to suggest, you know, people for that role if it becomes a more long-term process? Because when I initially heard about it, I was excited, and I'm still very excited and open-minded. But, you know, I did kinda, you hear of somebody who's coming, and immediately, you're excited, so you speak to, you know, friends, and you're like, "Look what we're doing," you know? And then you ask about the person, and the feedback that I received was, just wasn't what I was expecting. So, you know, and I asked just, you know, on the surface. So I just wanted to say with me, you know, how, you know, what do you ask a person who's filling that role? And, you know, I'm sure there's questions. So I just would be interested in those questions, I guess, and how they respond for him to, how they were responded by that person for him to be the person. And I mean, I don't know, he still could be the great, a great person. I haven't really closed my mind to that yet. But I'm very concerned because I feel like I had a meeting with Dr. McGowan, and it was very successful, and I was very happy, and I felt like, yay. The response to my daughter's YouTube video and everything that we've been trying to do this year, I feel like, you know, we're finally moving, and it feels good to be in that place. I also had a meeting with Dr. Hall yesterday, and it was also very good, very positive. And I'm a person who's very fond of data, and he'll be doing a lot of data tracking. So I'm just basically wondering, going forward, if this is the temporary response, you know, we'll probably need something long-term for everything that's coming, is there a process or will there be a process to suggest different consultants to work in this area? I know Dr. McGowan is opening up the committees, so maybe they can suggest there. But if there is not a process, can we possibly create one? Because I am a part of the Families of Color group, and this group, these parents, they're like awesome. They come from all these different specialties in this area already, and they're willing to volunteer and give their time. And it's free volunteer work, so why not utilize it? And they're already invested in the district.
Winnette, we would have, if this position was to become part of the long-term plan, and I, you know, have no reason I'm not suggesting that it won't, I'm just saying if it's beyond just this year of consulting with us and working on these issues specifically in a more immediate, like I mentioned before, a time-bound, very specific case, then we would post the position, we would recruit, we would welcome applications and referrals from everywhere and anywhere. We would go out and be searching for people, asking people for suggestions, including the group that you mentioned, putting the word out far and wide and recruiting that way. And then our process includes a committee of people who are interested, you know, depending on the position, we sometimes have students involved, but we always have parents involved, community members, administrators, teachers, staff, other staff members involved, and it's a pretty open process that way.
So he's gonna be, you said the entire year. So you said temporary, so I just want to make sure...
He will work with us this year.
...we haven't committed for the entire year. Because if he's already committed for the entire year, I would just recommend as a mom and from, you know, I did my own basic research from key community members who specialize in this area, and, I mean, the feedback that I receive, I would just recommend that everybody sitting here do that. And if you come back with the same answer, you know, I trust people on the board to represent me as such, but I would recommend that.
Okay. Thank you, Winnette. And, you know, as Dr. McGowan said, one of the things is, all of these efforts that we're talking about around this area are, you know, we began years ago in a number of them, and they're work in progress. And in this particular case, it's a consultant agreement for the year. We intend to utilize his talents in multiple ways, not just in the one way or two ways. And we'll look at it as we go. And Dr. McGowan, we would expect Dr. McGowan to bring to the board regular updates and progress reports, certainly parents who are involved are not shy, normally about contacting the board. And you're welcome to do that at any time. Send me a note or give me a phone call and just, you know, make sure, you know, Mark, please be aware, this is great, this, we'd like you to look at this further. I mean, parents do that all the time, you know? So we appreciate that, that feedback and that input. The one thing I would say is I want to, you know, we have not discussed, you know, our Diversity Equity Inclusion formal work of last year, let's say, in the committee and in the curriculum council, where much of the year was spent around culturally responsive curriculum, the work that our staff did on two different professional development days on anti-bias training. We haven't had a lot of opportunity to discuss all of that in our public meetings yet because a lot of it is work in progress. But I would just say to the group here today and anyone listening, that this Board of Education, the seven of us, are committed, deeply committed to this work. And it's something that the Brighton School District had all, has always been committed to, the leadership team and the board. I realize that certain elements of what some parents and community members would like us to do always don't, don't always move fast enough. But, you know, our commitment is to 3,600 kids, K-12 education, each and every child and family. And we are committed to the work, and we will see the, you know, nose to the grindstone and it'll make it stop. Thank you for coming today. Anyone else who wishes to address the board this morning, while we have public comment open? All right then, hearing no further. Thank you very much for those that have taken the time on this morning to come and comment. We do appreciate that. You're welcome to contact us through other means if you wish. Leave a card today also if you'd like. We are going to move on to the remainder of our meeting. May we have a motion, please, to approve our minutes of July 10th and our July 31st meetings?
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Jolene. Christina, you found something in one of those.
I'm already fixed it, I think.
Sorry, Ms.... We have Matt Cuomo listed for French Road at Dallas.
Okay, so we're all set on that then?
Yeah.
All right, with that correction, any other corrections, additions, deletions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. May we have a motion, please, for approval of teacher tenure recommendations for the two individuals listed on your agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Jolene and seconded by Larry. I'll turn it over to Dr. McGowan.
Just very briefly, Michelle Sayer is a teacher at Council Rock. She had been a student teacher at Council Rock, a substitute, a building substitute, and then a probationary teacher. Outstanding recommendation to make to you for her to receive a tenure appointment. We will go through all of the biographical details and the rest of the celebration of Michelle, certainly when we celebrate our tenure recipients, but...
So these would be our first approvals of this school year, correct?
Correct. So these are people that are hired essentially off-cycle.
Yeah.
So they probably started a month or two into the school year following two departures of people that happened like right before school started or in September, so they're off-cycle. But Michelle's an excellent recommendation, as is Lou Carason, physics teacher at the high school. Came to us from Ronnicoy, longtime teacher and had been a coach here, actually, for quite a while, golf coach, and had previously taught here as well, and does a really, really great job. Both of them, very active in committees, professional development work, and we're excited to recommend both of them for tenure.
Okay, great. And we'll, we'll hear more of them and see them in the, in the spring celebration. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're gonna talk a little bit about our Brighton Blueprint strategic plan before we turn it over to Dr. McGowan. May we have a motion to approve the plan as outlined and provided to us?
So moved?
Moved by Andrea?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jolene. Dr. McGowan?
Thank you very much. So this is a, you have a great deal of detail in front of you, both in the written copy and... and certainly online and what we posted, many of you have been involved in these discussions, but this is a quick overview, very specifically of the strategies developed and a little bit of a conversation about the process. So what's the reason for having a blueprint or a longer-term, larger strategic plan? It gives us focus as an organization, consistency among buildings. The best example around these and the effectiveness, efficiency conversation is Council Rock and Habits of the Mind several years ago. I know I use this over and over again, but several years ago, they developed the Habits of the Mind program, kids left there, went to French Road and started to talk about the Habits of the Mind and teachers weren't quite sure what they were talking about, just in jest. Teachers had a sense for what they were talking about, but it wasn't a program that necessarily followed them, even though it was heavily invested in Council Rock and a great initiative. French Road had its own great initiatives, but didn't include Habits of the Mind and it was a good awareness for us on this conversation of as an organization, K-12 being more focused on the same objectives, goals, priority areas, and being a little bit more consistent in that K-12 planning. Helped us be more efficient in our allocation of resources, but also just more effective in going deeper when the entire organization has the same focus. So we've really worked hard in that area. It gives every committee all the work we're doing in the district's direction, so the conversation in all the committees tends to go back to where does this fall in the blueprint, how does this fit into the longer-term plan, or should it be added as we go forward? Again, giving us consistency K through 12 in what's considered a medium to large size suburban school district organization. It's something kind of for us all to fall back on when committees are meeting in all different places, all different time, focused on different objectives. It brings us all together on some common goals. Also helps us capitalize on best practices across the district, so for Council Rock people to be on committees with high school people, talking about the work that they do, really connects us K-12 and capitalize on the great things that people are doing in each of the buildings. There's a lot of expertise in different places and this type of plan tends to bring that, bring that all to the table at the same time. So the process for us and what does it look like? We have the last Monday in June, a retreat, a team meeting, a blueprint team gets together. It's a district-wide planning event. Progress report is essentially given by each of the groups in the district, each of the departments, an update on the work that was done the previous years, and then we adjust the short and long-term goals or the objectives that are stated in every area and I'll go through those with you today. Then during, and that's really focused on the whats. This year, we were able to use thought exchange, feedback. The first year we did this, so this was the third time. The first year, we used K-12 insight survey data. We don't plan on surveying every year. For one, there's survey fatigue in the community, but also that data is still pretty worthwhile. It's a pretty big undertaking to gather information on an annual basis, so we've now been doing it every other year, we'll explore that every year, whether we not feel the need to go back again and gather more information. This year was a really rich experience actually in taking a different type of dataset, the thought exchange data, and being able to do analysis in real time. All 50-plus members of that group were able to analyze the information with the help of thought exchange, again, on the spot. The nature of that type of tool also is that you are essentially engaging in the analysis while answering the survey at the same time as a user, the user experience involves analysis. So that day was devoted to the whats, which is really what I'm going through with you today. The what strategies did that group decide on? Your plan, the overall blueprint plan, which would be a day-long exercise in walking through every step, has now added to it the hows and the whens. So the how is what committee, what vehicle, how do we get at that? And that's a decision then that is explored further and dug into the leadership team and all of you as a board through the leadership retreat that happens in August. So your roles and the role of the leadership team is determine how to get at something and when relative to what makes sense capacity in the organization-wise, but also resource capacity, when can we devote resources to that? So again, the community, the larger group is involved in determining the whats. What strategy should we use to get at the overall objectives? And then you and your roles and your expertise and your background representing the community are involved in developing the how and the when at that second opportunity in August. So now we'll finalize our committee charges based on the adopted plan. We communicate out this information to the organization and start to solicit volunteers in the community to be a part of these discussions. In September, the committees get together and the planning teams get together in each building to determine their work for the year and to plan that out. November, February, and June is when the community is provided with updates through board meeting updates and different committee check-ins through a pretty established process. And when you adopt the agenda, the board meeting agenda items, which is at the next board meeting in September, your plan for the year, when you'll hear what reports, that determines then the feedback from each of these committees and the timeline that they're working towards. And so we'll draft that out for you and get that out, you approve that in September and that tells you when you're gonna get each of your updates on this work and recommendations from each team. So today, we're just reviewing the objectives and the goals in each area, the strategies essentially for meeting the objectives as developed by the blueprint planning team. So then the more further development of the action plan has been done, it's included in the hard copy that you have and involves the more specific steps. So if you see up here, for example, the steps that we just talked about with diversity and equity, you'll see strategies, but the more further development around some of those individuals, Reverend Washington, et cetera, are not mentioned because that was developed further as part of the action plan to accomplish the goals. And that's the note on the bottom. The full plan includes action plans for each strategy and the tentative plans that we put in place. So very quickly, not to read at you, but I do think it's important to publicly state the objectives in each area. Safety, security, and wellness, the plan states that we believe families trust us with our children and that families of our staff members expect their loved ones to be safe in their work environment. Above all else, it will be our priority to make sure that our schools are safe, conducive to learning, and fostering overall health and wellness, both emotionally and physically. And so the committee that worked on this particular priority area, and there are five areas altogether, had the opportunity to weigh in on that, make adjustments, that's been the priority, the objective for that priority area since the beginning of this and they could make adjustments based on feedback that they had received. The second area, rigorous coursework for all students, we believe that all students should be provided with coursework that is challenging in order to promote individual growth. Each learner will be supported in order to maximize their potential based on needs and interests. This will necessitate a growth mindset by all. And the third priority area, creativity and innovation, which you'll see in the plan is combined quite a bit with rigorous coursework for all students, essentially if it boiled down to it, it'd be the curriculum instruction area. We believe that our students need to be prepared for professions and life experiences that we have not yet imagined. The diversity and equity area that we believe has been updated reflect the work of the committee last year in developing a statement on diversity and equity for our district. And it says, we believe the Brighton Central School District will continue to respect value and validate all of the ways we are different in our community. We recognize the many forms of diversity among us, including race, gender, sexuality, abilities, socioeconomic status, and cultural identity in all forms overt and hidden. We believe that these differences are what make us each unique, special, and important as human beings and prepare each individual to be a good citizen in a multicultural world. All students and staff should be an equal member of a school environment that honors and respects the individuality of each other. Students should be provided with a culturally responsive curriculum by a staff that continues its long history of embracing diversity in all forms. We will be intentionally inclusive in our practices, policies, and environment. And finally, the fifth area, instructional technology, that all students and staff should utilize tools and materials that will allow them to enhance the learning experience and improve the home-school connection. So what strategies in each priority area did we outline? I will generalize them, so I'm not reading each one of them at you, but in the safety, security, wellness area, we're looking at finding a way to make sure we have meaningful reporting of social and emotional health to families. So no different than what we do academically, report where kids are at, we want to find a way to make sure we're reporting to families where kids are at in terms of their social emotional health as well and look at our tools for reporting, make sure it's inclusive of that. In order to develop a better engagement of families over these issues and better utilize resources that may be available, like to make sure that we have a community-engaged resource here at school to help support mental health needs. We'd like to make sure that we are monitoring continuously our procedures in safety and security. Several of you are involved in the safety and we'll continue to work in that area. We're developing a capital plan, continue to develop a capital plan that addresses safety, security, and accessibility concerns that are brought forth by stakeholders. So that, a good example of that is the TCMS parking lot is brought up often. We need a capital plan to address those needs as well. We'll develop key performance indicators to help evaluate success, mental health strategies, and initiatives. And finally, looking forward, we're looking at how we make sure we provide a community-engaged resource to support current and future character education programming. That was, you'll see some of these have future considerations because we just looked at what our ability, it's not that character education's not important to us this year, it's always important, but how much capacity we have to fulfill all of the different objectives that came forward. In the rigorous coursework and innovation area, so creativity and innovation area, this is where I mentioned, these two get combined quite a bit. We have a goal around grading to make sure that we have consistent, congruent K-12 systems that reflect a district philosophy on grading. Acceleration advanced coursework that we're increasing our participation in classes, particularly, and this is to the diversity equity area, by identifying barriers for students to entering those courses and reducing those barriers, we'd like a plan for that. And making sure that we are addressing culturally responsive teaching practices by incorporating responsive curriculum and teaching across the PK through 12 experience with students and families. We don't currently have a pre-K program, by the way, but the lingo currently in our work is to make sure we're looking at PK through 12, so we're preparing when we transition kids from their preschool or prior to school experience to our kindergarten, what we're doing around that. And we currently have a community education-funded program, self-paid by parents preschool program that we'd like to work, continue to work more with. So this outlines then more programming, looking at alternative coursework, new multidisciplinary courses, developing personalized learning opportunities, and integrating arts across the curriculum. Long-term, we'd like to be looking at more explicit programming around organizational study skills, alignment of our curriculum based on our mission and vision relative to the teacher evaluation process as well. So more connection between what our learning goals are and what the teacher evaluation system looks like. Looking at more inquiry and project-based learning, of course, more real-world problem-solving skills. This is a need that has come up often from students with a greater desire to delve more into those topics. More explicit instruction in Habits of the Mind, again, it's happening quite a bit at kindergarten, but thinking about those skills and dispositions across the curriculum K through 12 across the district is something we'd like to continue to look more long-term. A plan for transitioning program, again, for entering kindergarten students, that long-term perspective on that, especially as we're looking at the full-day kindergarten implementation. And the transition from Council Rock to Fraz, identifying more and more programs that we've made quite a bit of progress in that area, but we have more work to do, thinking about each of those transitions along the way. And in the diversity equity area, I mentioned this to you before, these break down really into three primary areas, that is hiring practices, family engagement, and special education. So these are chunked in the action plan based on those three areas in particular. We'll be looking at our hiring recruitment practices, developing new strategies. It says, consider working with Renee Baker. The action plan actually includes working with Renee Baker and she's agreed to do that with us. Our district community package essentially, and this is advice already from Renee around how do you market yourself to candidates from all different areas and all different backgrounds, making sure you're presenting exactly what you have to offer, both in terms of the job, but also a place to live and what type of experience that is in your community. We're looking to work with teacher ed programs at higher ed to develop a better pipeline for diverse candidates and opportunities for diverse candidates to participate in internship and other activities here that may help them want to be here then when they graduate or are entering the job market. We're looking at the classification of our students to make sure we understand what our equity practices are in that area and what our rates of classification are relative to each different type of group of students. Looking at our interventions that are put into place then, what are the specific prescriptions that are provided to each group of students and what is the equity in that practice? The inclusivity of our programs also and where segregation begins to happen for groups of students and what that means, what we should do about it, and developing action plans around that. We're also looking at our family engagement practices relative to accommodating all families and finding equity for all families, making sure all events, activities, opportunities here in the district are accessible to all families. Looking at a family engagement plan for the district that identifies how we will engage families, both capitalizing on best practices, but providing consistency in the experience, trying to best understand what will work best for all families. A parent mentoring support program that will help all parents better access all aspects of our services that don't necessarily depend on everybody having all the equitable or same amount of social capital to understand how to access programming. Families from underrepresented groups, how they feel, asking families how they feel about current levels of engagement and the best ways for them to be more engaged in the school environment. Work with members of underrepresented groups to better develop representation in regards to these discussions as well. We'll study the accessibility of mental health services for families in underrepresented population. The involvement of community members on diverse topics will be very important to us in a strategy moving forward as well. We also had a suggestion, came up with this group, on the labeling of food to be more culturally responsive and inclusive and thinking about, certainly a big topic that came up last year, equity and cultural responsibility with regard to our discipline practices will be a focus for our district as well this year through work that the leadership team is already engaged in. In fact, the, the high school staff is currently working with Prairie Group around restorative practices at the high school this morning, exploring what that would look like going forward. In instructional technology, we'll be looking to ensure that all students K-12 have access to appropriate technological tools. This has been a focus for us over the last several years and that they have the necessary skills to utilize those tools and meet the ITSE standards or the technology standards. Like to make sure there's congruency between the tools as they move up for the grade levels because we use different types of tools and different software platforms. We'd like to make sure that they scaffold and that they are congruent and not disjointed. We need to provide PD opportunities for students to do that, or I'm sorry, for teachers to do that. We've put a great tool in people's hands, the question always is, but how well is it being used? How impactful is that instruction? How can we get better and better at making that a tool that does enhance instruction? We want to make sure the technology is being used to that point as a value add and not a substitute for experiences. We'd also like to make sure that we have a sense for how many of our students do not have high quality or any internet access at home and make sure we're providing access in ways that make sense for their family and really understand that. How dependent are we on that and are we putting kids at a disadvantage in that regard? Looking to develop a system to gather input from users regarding the effectiveness of tools. Looking at a screen time assessment as well and communication to parents. We need to standardize our use of different systems across all grade levels, that's a big issue for us. And I speak as a parent, there are different places for me to access information about my child or to communicate with a teacher and we need to standardize that, make sure that tool is as efficient as possible for parents. And really increase parent education component. If we're hoping that people will be engaged using these tools, we need to find ways to make sure that we're helping them with that. So our next steps are to provide this information to all staff, develop charge documents for each of the committees, which further specifies based on the action plan, the work that they will be doing. We share this work then at opening day and through different faculty meeting presentations, solicit volunteers for this work as well, convene groups, and begin refining and taking action steps. So I'd encourage all of you, encourage our audience here today, when you see the invitation go out for committees, please send that on to people that you're working with as well so that they can send back an email. It's committeevolunteer@BCSD.org, I think is the address, but the right address for sure is in that email. Please send it out and we're looking for feedback on that. Any questions from the board?
You know, I just have a comment. I have to say, in another universe, far, far away, I came to this board because I was asked to serve as a chairperson of a long-range strategic plan. Some of you, none of you will remember this, but anyway, Kevin may.
And we're not eating chocolate?
You probably weren't even born then.
I remember. I actually remember that.
Yeah. And that document, I have to say, that document was placed up on, you know, on a shelf. I've worked with at least five superintendents since I've been on this board. I've not ever seen, and I've worked with strategic plans at RIT and other places, I've never seen anything like this in my professional and personal career where we really have a document that is really a living document. You know, it's created, it's then is updated every year and it is discussed. And I want to say it's just a tremendous, tremendous plus for this, this internship.
Thanks, Marv. Thanks all of you for supporting. I will tell you that we're a victim of sometimes our own desire to be innovative and to shift and try new things. The weakness in that is that we, we had a tendency to sometimes be all over the place. And not, not in bad ways, it was really good work. It wasn't that it was necessarily scattered or disorganized, but to really focus, you know, you have 3,600 students, 600 employees, and how do you get to the right place and how do you really clearly articulate, okay, what is exactly we want for kids? How do we get there and how do we keep people focused on that work in a way that's measurable, it's accountable, it's communicated, it is transparent, it involves a lot of people in that conversation, it's reflective of what the community's asking us to look at? Having a plan where you're always going back to that. Is it, it comes up in so many different meetings internally, you know, what if we tried this? And, and, you know, Debbie and Lou aren't here or Carolyn, but in our cabinet meetings there's times when ideas come, this, everybody, by the way, is victim to this and we have this conversation, well, where is it in the blueprint? Because it's a great idea, but, and, and that doesn't mean that we're frozen in time and not able to make adjustments either or that it's immovable, but it really does help to focus us. And again, particularly at a time where there's limited resources to just say, yeah, let's go try that. Where does it fit in? Because every objective will impact another piece, another part of the mission or another part of the work if, if we're not cognizant of how resource allocation impacts that.
So it does, though, capitalize then on the human resource that's available. There are only so many people and so many people able to focus on these items, and it really does give us a clear direction on where we're at. So, thank you.
Well, I think you make a good point, Kevin, and really to Marv's point. I think it's evolved to a point now that it's become our plan. The work on it is year-round, but the, you know, the May-June timeframe when we put stakeholders together to begin the early work for the new plan and the updated plan, living and breathing, and most residents would have no way of digging into this or knowing. To many people, it would look like boilerplate, but if you really take the time to read through this, and if you compare our strategic planning work in this document with other school districts, I mean, the specificity, the detail here, the measurables, the dates that get attached to the report-outs now as we moved into September, this is beyond what most school districts have and utilize, and we stick to it. You know, many places will come up with a new strategic planning document or new process every couple of years, and the stuff goes by the wayside. So I think it's been a great guiding document and a guiding principle for us, keep moving forward and to be able to implement things that are important to the community in a way that can be done properly for the long haul. So thank you for your leadership on that. Anybody else? Then we have a motion and a second to approve the Brighton blueprint as outlined, and post it completely online, by the way, for folks who want to go through it. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And Kevin, thank you for the review this morning, and all who have contributed and will contribute to make it work all during the year. A motion, please, for approval of the district's professional development plan?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Christina or Andrea. So the board knows this, but for those who are in attendance or watching, we are required by New York State to yearly approve a teacher's professional development plan. That work is done during the year by a committee of our teacher center, Resource Center. And the plan itself has on the inside front page all those who contributed and worked on that, and now it is complete. It needs to be approved by September 1st and sent on to New York State. So that's the purpose of that document. We appreciate everybody's efforts on that. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Speaking of things to satisfy New York State, may we have a motion to approve our plan and procedures under the new school lunch shaming ban, please?
So moved.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Julene. We discussed this-
We've reconfirmed that we cannot rename this, right?
Well, the decision was made, you know, just a quick review. State issued new regulation law, actually, legislature, late last school year, and required that all of these procedures and processes be adopted and put into place, I believe, by September 1st also, and posted conspicuously. It's a very detailed and pro forma-type process that must be followed, and that's what you have here in the memo to Dr. McGowan from Lou dated July 1st. And it also includes, we'll get to it in a second, but updating and adding, second read in a minute on the policy itself. So the discussion was, the advice from auditors, the advice from consultants was to adopt it specifically as law requires it. Don't go outside the box. We really didn't lunch shame. We had processes in place to make sure children weren't taken care of, and this reaffirms that. It spells it out in detail. Reading through it, you'll see it's lengthy, and it's quite clear to anybody who may want to look at it, the policy and procedure around it, and then we have the companion policy that goes with it. So, any questions or anything further on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then as typical of this meeting, we have a number of policy updates, first read policies. Let me, yeah, sorry about that. First read on, a motion, please, for first read, policy 7221, students' early graduation and participation in graduation ceremonies and activities?
Could I, I just want to ask a question. I know we've gone through these, there are a number of them. Can we make a motion to approve all of them and then go through, or no? Do we need to do?
No. I think the best thing to do is to go each one, just in case, especially the first read, Marv, because if there are points or-
I get it. I get it. I just wanted to make things easier. All right, go. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Entirely fine. Normally, I'm one for expediency and put it all on the consent agenda, but it's more transparent this way, and if things are-
I get it.
It also forces us to take a look a little closer and find typos and things like that.
Sure.
So anyway, now, first read on policy 7221, students' early graduation. Can we have a motion, please, to approve first read?
So moved.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Julene. This 7221 is really just to add language in accordance with education law with regard to students, students with special needs and alternative-type credentials. So that's really clarifying that. And this is first read, it's been through our folks. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, and it will come back as a second read in the future. And then also now, a motion, please, for approval of policy 7222, diploma or credential options for students with disabilities?
So moved.
Moved by-
Second.
Andrea, seconded by Larry. And again, this is sort of a companion policy. It's an amendment to delete the section regarding participation with students with disabilities, and the requirement to provide notice in accordance with a law called Zachary's Law, which was actually repealed by the legislature and replaced by a number of items which necessitate the changes that you see in that, the amendments to that policy. Anybody have any-
I do.
Yep?
Under A, I think there might be a word missing at the end of the sentence. Will coordinate activities with counseling personnel and BOSI staff to ensure that students meet credit and sequence requirements and to consider them for vocational. Is there a word missing there?
Should be programs.
Looks like it. Let's say, let's say we'll ask for approval, first read, with the addition of the word "programs," and we will check.
Okay.
Because we'll come back for a second read. Thank you. Does anyone have anything else? All right, then with that change, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Policy, motion, please, for a policy course read, approval, 7320, students, alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Larry.
Second.
Seconded by Marv. This is being revised, really to coordinate things, to be consistent with a policy that we're going to deal with right here. Changes in public law and other relevant federal and state laws that have occurred regarding tobacco and smoking, vaping, and other substances. So this policy really relates to coordination with the next one that we're going to ask for approval also. So then, anybody have any questions on that, by the way? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's 7320. Now, a motion, please, for approval, first read, policy 5640, smoking and tobacco use?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Marv. And again, this is being revised, and you'll see when you read through that, quite a bit of revision with regard to changes in public health law.
It's like a companion piece, 7220.
Right, they both of them go together, so. Anything further on that? Does anybody have anything? All in favor?
It's my only, for the whole thing. That's my only, the only thing I caught.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. First read, motion, please, to approve policy 6220 on temporary personnel?
So moved.
Moved by Andrea.
Second.
Seconded by Julene. Again, this is under temporary personnel, it's being revised to reflect an amendment to the Commissioner's Regulation, which had previously allowed an uncertified teacher to work up to 90 days as a substitute teacher. So that policy had to be amended. We've been reviewed internally, and it's coming forward now. Does anyone have any points or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then the final first read, policy 8230 on instruction, health and mental health instruction. May we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Julene.
Second.
Seconded by Larry. This is, you all well know, we've discussed this, but the comprehensive K-12 mental health education program, the state has revised that to add language on the district's obligation to add and provide a mental health education within our health education programs. We were ahead of the curve on that, but this policy, the final corrections and changes to that now align with state law curriculum, and we're on the air on that, so that's where this comes from. Does anybody have anything on that further? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good job then. Second read, just a couple. Policy 5410, that is non-instructional business operations around purchasing. May we have a motion to approve the second read?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Julene, seconded by Andrea. Now, you recall, we talked about this at a first read. It updates our purchasing policy in a few areas, clarifying use of recycled products, alternative formats for instructional materials. It also adds environmentally sensitive cleaning and maintenance product, specificity in regulation, best value bid awards, geographic preferences in local agricultural, and also a section, an updated section on construction contracts. So it's a seven-page policy with a number of updates that went through first read. Now, I don't have any additional comment from anybody internally. Does anybody have any further on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And policy 7513, may we have a motion to approve, second read, on administration of medication?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Christina. This is a six-page policy that adds a number of issues around Good Samaritan exemptions, the addition of feminine hygiene products to all school buildings, which we had talked about last year. It also clarifies some areas on sanitizers and sunscreens, and an update really in that, revision in that. So I don't have anything further from staff. I believe the first read was fine. Anybody have anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then finally, we approve the plan and procedures provided by Lou. This is the companion policy update, 5660, meal charging and prohibition against meal shaming. May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Julene.
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Again, we discussed this in its alignment.
It puts students first, but it's a lousy name.
It is. We discussed it, and, you know, we don't do it, we won't do it, and it does put students first, so you're right. And obviously, there were issues statewide, or we wouldn't be in that situation. So we are in full compliance on that, and we'll go forward on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We also, at this meeting, typically approve the revisions, any revisions, and complete the 2018-2019 Code of Conduct for the new school year. May we have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Julene. We have a full set of the Code of Conduct. You have the set with the changes and revisions. There's also a list of changes or revisions that we've all had for a while and read through. This is something that has gone through every year, actually off and on during the year, by our personnel, and then brought forward at this time of the year for the current 2018-2019 Code of Conduct. Does anybody have any question as to what's contained in here? Title, is anything that-
No.
Okay.
No, I read all of those.
Yeah, this is, you know, this is, this item has spent, obviously, quite a bit of time is spent on that, and this will go out to all of our students and parents, so.
I do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And then finally, on a business, our consent agenda. May we have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry. I make note of, we do have three gifts to acknowledge. All three gifts came from, through the Brighton Education Fund. The first two are directly from the David De Haven Memorial Fellowship, which include a $2,100 gift for the registration of seven Brighton High School teachers to attend conference this fall, and also $1,117 for nine middle school teachers to subscribe to staff development seminars for the year. And then also, it includes a gift of $192 for the purchase of a Science Olympiade Crimebusters kit for the 12 Corners Middle School Science Olympiade team. So we appreciate the efforts through the De Haven Fellowship and the Brighton Education Fund, and all those that support the Brighton Education Fund.